Good evening and welcome to the January 13th meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time of the day, the City Council's final request is also on the ballot. Thank you. Roll call of the members, Councilor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Penta.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present. Calendar item number one, Mayor Rizzo will conduct the State of the City address.
I just want to take a second here. I want to take a second here to introduce the man who's been leading this city for the last two years in a great direction, and we're about to be in a transformational state of affairs here in Revere, our mayor, Mayor Dan Rizzo. Thank you very much, and thank all of you for being here. I know seating is tough, so my apologies to those of you who unfortunately do not have a seat, but I do appreciate your attendance and being here. Mr. President, Madam Clerk, Honorable Members of the City Council, Dr. Dakin, Members of the School Committee, Mr. Speaker, Senator Petraselli, Representative Reinstein, District Attorney Connolly, to all Department Heads, and last but not least, the citizens of Revere. Good evening and thank you for attending and/or watching tonight's State of the City address. Before I begin, I'd like to remember and honor the memory and the passing of a former member of our Public Works Department, Gary Choffey. Gary was a longtime city employee and familiar face at City Hall. It was a privilege to know and work with Gary. I know he will be missed by all of us in municipal government and by his friends and family, especially his wife Peggy and his sons Gary, Michael, Derek, and Tori. On behalf of the entire city, I want to offer our condolences and ask you all to stand in a moment of silence. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate all of our recently elected city councils and school committee members. I value my relationship with both bodies and look forward to continuing our work and moving Revere forwards towards a better and brighter future. Only through collaboration and a shared vision will we succeed. My administration continues to work each and every day to preserve our shared values while pursuing our collective vision for the city. With your help, your passion, and your energy, we can achieve great things both today and tomorrow. Together, we will create an environment that fosters strong economic development and investment opportunities. Together, we will ensure that our children receive a first-class education. Together, we will improve city services and continue to make Revere a safer place to live. Revere is on the rise, and I know that our best days are yet to come. In Revere, we start with a high-quality school system. You should know that last year, in 2013, our superintendent, Dr. Paul Dakin, was named the Massachusetts Superintendent of the Year by the American Association of School Administrators. Congratulations, Dr. Dakin. While Dr. Dakin has done outstanding work during his tenure, he would be the first to tell you that it is because he is staffed by some of the best teachers and administrators in all of Massachusetts. Thank you, Dr. Dakin, for everything you do. You are an outstanding partner for our city, our schools, our parents, and our kids. Revere's curriculum is one of the most rigorous in the state. That statement is validated by Revere students scoring amongst the very best in urban school districts across Massachusetts on standardized tests. But we move beyond rote education to give students the relevant skills they will need to succeed in today's economy. While learning is obviously critical, members of the Revere Public School faculty are also charged with building personal and lasting relationships with students, tapping into their unique needs and backgrounds. We have terrific teachers here in Revere, and I'm proud to serve with the City Council and chair a school committee that continues to support all of the good work they do each and every day. In Revere, while grades matter most, we are also committed to ensuring that teachers and students have the necessary tools to provide a 21st-century education that will give our students the best chance to succeed in life. Teaching and learning is done best when we provide them with the best possible buildings and classroom environments. Recently, with the support of the School Committee and the City Council, we approved the construction of the long-awaited McKinley Elementary School, now to be named the Sergeant James J. Hill School. Also, extracurricular opportunities are an important part of a child's overall growth and development. We have enhanced these opportunities by recently approving the construction of a new Little League softball complex in West Revere, and will be breaking ground next month on a new state-of-the-art, multi-use Harry Delarussue Stadium that will host football, soccer, lacrosse, and other track-and-field events. This stadium will be one of the best facilities of its kind in the entire region, and will have a lasting impact on our community for generations to come. The construction of the stadium would not have been possible without a $2.7 million grant from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. You've heard me say, "Revere is on the rise," and one of the reasons I believe that has been our aggressive approach in attracting investors and developers and to expose them to all that Revere has to offer. This includes our beautiful oceanfront, our proximity to Logan Airport in downtown Boston, and our expansive public transportation system. Much of what we show them has been featured on the national television segment hosted by Football Hall of Famer Terry Bradshaw called "Today in America." We're also quick to point out that Revere was named a top spot to live by the Boston Globe magazine back on May 6, 2013. In keeping with our promise to beautify and revitalize our core Broadway business district, we recently secured a $1.5 million grant from the Executive Office of Housing and Community Development. This has special significance for me, as I advocated for it when I campaigned for mayor back in 2011. This grant, along with other funds that we've secured through our community development block grants, will help us accomplish many things. They will include the demolition of the old police station that will pave the way for roughly 50 new parking spaces adjacent to City Hall. These spaces will ease the parking burden placed on Broadway businesses and those visiting City Hall. Additionally, we will invest in streetscape and signage improvements, as well as new sidewalks, lighting, and crosswalks. We believe the more visually appealing and pedestrian-friendly Broadway becomes, the more interest businesses and residents will have in visiting our downtown. Our goal is to once again make our central business district a vibrant and attractive place to live and work. In keeping with our goals to bring meaningful development to our city, we recently broke ground on the Vanguard at Waterfront Square, 194-unit, high-end rental apartment community on Revere Beach. The Vanguard will be the first project to be developed as part of the Waterfront Square Transit-Oriented Development Master Plan. The total estimated project cost is $41.7 million. In addition to the normally required site plan review process, this project had to take an extra step by receiving approval from the Revere Beach Design Board, ensuring that this and any future project meets with the strict standards for excellence as set forth as part of the overall Transit-Oriented Development Master Plan. In addition to the residential units laid out in this master plan, we can anticipate further construction that includes office, hotel, and retail development components. This master plan will create over five acres of public plazas and open space, and of course, access to Revere Beach over the beautiful Maquis Pedestrian Footbridge. As an administration, we are leveraging all of the investments made in our city to make needed improvements to our water and sewer infrastructure across our community. These improvements will enhance the quality of life for all residents and support evolving business and economic development opportunities for future generations. Creating efficient city services continues to be a top priority in my administration. Through technology and our Revstat program of performance management, we have been able to streamline services and develop strategies that improve service delivery. Soon, new personnel and state-of-the-art technologies will be added to support our Inspection Services Department. Inspector's paper pads will be replaced with modern mobile devices that will allow inspectors to automate code enforcement, identify troubled properties, and issue fines electronically. We have also boasted resources within our Information Technology Department to ensure that Revere stays current in an ever-changing environment, one that mandates doing more with less. Since we last spoke about our Revstat program, the City of Revere's Performance Management Initiative, we have held over 40 meetings with our DPW, Police, and Fire Departments. In these meetings, we use up-to-date facts and figures to identify trends and solve problems in a collaborative manner. We will be working over the coming months to introduce additional departments into the initiative, starting with our Inspection Services Department. We also continue to make changes in the way our budget is created and presented. In keeping with our efforts to implement performance-based budgeting, our FY '15 budget will challenge Department Heads to set goals, celebrate accomplishments, and create measures for success. We must change the way we manage our budget and think about the allocation of resources. It should be becoming increasingly clear that the new programs we've implemented over the last couple of years, performance management and performance-based budgeting, is in keeping with our desire and commitment to provide the best and most cost-effective delivery of city services to our residents. While there are numerous responsibilities in running a city with over 50,000 people and over 1,000 municipal employees, my number-one priority and responsibility as mayor and will always be to ensure the safety and security of our residents. We've made numerous changes in the way we approach public safety, including routine walking patrols, stepped-up visibility throughout our neighborhoods, and consistent outreach to help create additional crime watch groups. Last summer, we successfully established a neighborhood substation in our central business district across from City Hall. This office is staffed by community policing officers dedicated to listening to the concerns of residents and providing a much-needed presence in this part of the city. Police Chief Joe Cafarelli is committed to bringing the Police Department into all of our neighborhoods in a proactive manner. Through his leadership, one of the ways we have done that is by the reintroduction of the city's Citizens Police Academy, a program where residents can learn firsthand what our Police Department does each and every day, and how they, as residents, can help protect their own neighborhoods. Feel free to contact the Revere Police Department for upcoming academies and how you may be able to participate. I will do all I can to ensure the department has the necessary personnel, vision, and resources to keep the city of Revere safe. I am also thankful for the continued efforts of our Fire Chief Gene Dougherty and his entire department. Gene's leadership as head of our emergency management team continues to be vital to the safety of our community. His department continues to be amongst the best in the state when it comes to response times, and the first to use KNACAN, a drug used to counter the effects of opiate overdose. They have saved hundreds of lives in the process. Chief Dougherty has also utilized our Code Red system to help keep our residents informed of any and all events that will impact them in a significant way. I encourage you, if you haven't already done so, to sign up for these Code Red announcements. You can receive them by phone, by email, or by text message. To sign up, please check out our website at revere.org or by calling City Hall at 781-286-8111. You can also stay informed by subscribing to our monthly newsletter, where we update our residents on events and information that we feel is relevant. You can subscribe to this newsletter by contacting us, again, at 781-286-8111, or by emailing us at revere_mayor@revere.org. Earlier, I talked about economic development and the exciting opportunities that I believe lie ahead for our community. The tremendous byproducts of these opportunities include job creation and stabilizing our residential taxes. To stabilize residential taxes, we must do one of two things: we must cut expenses, which in general means cutting services, or adding a steady stream of commercial tax revenues. I'd like to take a moment and talk about one of the most significant and important project proposals in this city's history: the future of Suffolk Downs and resort-style gaming here in Revere. Back on November 5, Revere voters overwhelmingly said yes to a resort-style casino at Suffolk Downs. Since then, we have worked feverishly with the State Gaming Commission to see to it that their voices, over 6,500 of them, would be heard. After much debate, the Gaming Commission agreed with our position and has allowed the process to move ahead. Fast forward to today. Mohegan Sun, Revere's new gaming partner and premier gaming brand here in New England, is now proposing to invest $1.3 billion in developing a restored-style casino at Suffolk Downs. They will hire thousands of people, invest millions into our local economy, and spend tens of millions of dollars on transportation improvements that will have an incredibly positive and wide-ranging regional impact for commuters on the entire North Shore. Mohegan Sun brings a wealth of experience and expertise that will no doubt allow Suffolk Downs to survive and once again thrive as it had in the days when Seabiscuit first ran and where the legendary Beatles played to a packed house. While the Gaming Commission has allowed us to move forward, they have required us to hold another referendum on this new host-community agreement. That election will be held on February 25. I recognize that this creates yet another burden on an already worn-down electorate. However, I am confident that as the details and economic benefits of this new agreement become more publicized and understood, Revere residents will see that it is well worth it to come out one more time in support. In fact, I believe the voters will come out in greater numbers and create a larger margin of victory than we saw back in November. Let me explain why. First off, they will create 2,500 construction jobs and 4,000 permanent jobs upon opening. Before they open, Mohegan Sun will make upfront payments to the city of Revere in the amount of $33 million. Then, using estimates that call for $1 billion in yearly gross gaming revenues, Mohegan Sun will make annual payments to the city of Revere of $40 million. To put all of this in perspective, over the 15 years that the license will be granted for, we can anticipate receiving over $600 million. Now, let's assume for a moment that their estimates are wrong, and business doesn't go the way they anticipate. We have instituted minimums that regardless of how business goes, Revere is taken care of. The minimum the city of Revere will ever get during that same 15-year period is $429 million. On the other hand, if they exceed their estimates of $1 billion, we could easily surpass that $600 million figure. Additionally, they will spend between $40 and $50 million in transportation and infrastructure improvements. This is why I say our traffic situation will actually improve, not get worse. This statement is not based on my interpretation, but rather based on traffic engineers that have researched, studied, and developed a traffic mitigation plan. Now, many of you may be asking yourself, "Why should I care about this project? What does all of this mean for me?" Let me talk about that for a moment. First and foremost, it is our intention to provide property tax and water and sewer rate relief and stabilization for all Revere property owners. We are still working to quantify the true value of these benefits, but are committed to ensuring that is the maximum amount that we are capable of providing. Second, the city intends to use over $6 million of the first year's community impact fee to put more police on the street, bolster fire preparedness and response times, supplement our school budget, and continue to contribute to our stabilization, or otherwise known as rainy day, funds. We will also use these funds from this project to support the replacement of the Harry Delarussue Stadium, and based on discussions I've had with our Parks and Recs Director, Michael Hinajosa, and new Director of Eldra Fia, Steve Fielding, I have committed to the construction of a much-needed new youth center and a new or completely refurbished senior center, making both of these facilities and services the best in all of Massachusetts. We have also provided for a recurring $250,000 annual grant that will be used to promote smart growth and economic development throughout the city. With respect to jobs and local investment, Mohegan Sun will hold job fairs and vendor forums in order to meet and honor the following commitments: 20% of all permanent jobs will go to Revere residents; 75% of all permanent jobs will go to people residing within 15 miles of Revere; they will spend $10 million annually on goods and services with Revere businesses; they will spend $50 million annually on businesses that are located within a 15-mile radius of Revere. This is keeping with our belief that this is truly a regional project that will not only bolster Revere's future, but that of the entire North Shore as well. I talked about traffic earlier, and I'd just like to highlight a few of the ways we're addressing those concerns. But before I do, I think it's important to remember that as important as the issue of traffic is to the city, it is equally, or if not more, important to Suffolk Downs and Mohegan Sun. They want to keep traffic moving smoothly and eliminate bottlenecks. Think about this: they are spending over $1 billion on this project. It does them absolutely no good if they can't get their customers in and out of the property with as little amount of time and effort as possible. One of the most significant and important improvements will be their almost $25 million commitment on improvements to Route 1A that includes the Boardman Street flyover or an equivalent that meets the needs and requirements of the DOT. Another is an almost $4 million investment in and around Donnelly Square in Beauchamp. Residents of the Beauchamp community have been an active voice in this overall discussion, and clearly, their voices have been heard. At this time, I would like to thank the people at Suffolk Downs and Mohegan Sun for being such great partners in the negotiation process. Since 1936, Suffolk Downs has been an excellent neighborhood partner, and we believe that Mohegan Sun will follow their lead by continuing to be a major part of Revere and its imminent transformation. This agreement is an extraordinary deal for Revere. It will ensure the future of our economic vitality and well-being for decades to come. I urge all Revere residents to learn about this important proposal and vote yes for Revere on Election Day, February 25. The state of our city is strong. It is strong because of its people. I'd like to take a moment to recognize some of these people and tell you how they make our city a better place. I'd like to first start with Kathy Reinstein. Representative Reinstein is stepping down, as many of you may know, after 15 years? 15 years as our state representative. Currently, she is part of leadership, ranking number four overall, and amongst many of her other achievements and accomplishments was the driving force behind the legislation that paved the way for expanded gaming here in Massachusetts. Kathy is not only a friend, but an extremely competent and well-respected member of the legislature. She has worked on big issues, but never forgot the day-to-day problems that her constituents deal with each and every day here in Revere and throughout her district. Her work ethic speaks for itself. She, like her father before her, lived and worked Revere each and every day. In my opinion, she will go down as one of our city's great, true leaders. As she moves on to the private sector, I wish her and her family all of the success and prosperity that she so deserves, though for selfish reasons, I hate to see her go because she leaves me with a legislative void that will be very hard to fill. Congratulations, Kathy. During World War II, Lieutenant Eileen Marullo was stationed at the Walter Reed Amputation Center in Bethesda, Maryland. She joined the Women's Army Corps in 1944 after graduating from Boston University. As a registered physical therapist, she helped wounded veterans. After leaving the Army in 1946, she spent the next four years as the head therapist of rehabilitation at the Naval Hospital in Chelsea. In 1969, she began a 25-year career in the Revere Public School System as a science teacher. As time went on, Eileen began documenting women's veterans from the area. She realized there was not much in the way of recognition for women who served, especially those who served in World War II. Shortly after I became mayor, she began a campaign looking for women veterans from Revere, searching newspaper articles, speaking at social groups, and appearing on local-access cable television. After tracking down 154 names of Revere women who participated in World War II, she went out to raise more than $10,000 to erect a monument that would honor their service. On September 2, 2013, a monument acknowledging these women and their service to our country was erected, and now stands prominently on the lawn of the American Legion, a validation decades later for the commitment that these women had to our city and our nation, and a fitting tribute to Eileen's hard work and perseverance. During the Ninth Annual Women's Veterans Appreciation Day at the State House, Secretary of Veterans Affairs Coleman Nie presented Eileen with the Deborah Sampson Award. This award is named after a woman who dressed as a man to fight in the Revolutionary War. There are currently 27,000 women veterans in Massachusetts, according to the Department of Veteran Services. We honor them, Eileen, and all the men and women of our armed forces that continue to serve us here and around the world. Thank you, Eileen, for all your service. On April 19, shortly after the Marathon bombings, the North Metro SWAT team was called into Watertown at around 3:00 a.m., shortly after a wild chase and dramatic gunfight played out on the streets of that city. Suspect number two, Sarnayev, the second suspect in that bombing, had escaped, and law enforcement needed every tactical team available to help search the homes within a 20-block perimeter. Led by Chief Joe Cafarelli, they took their armored SWAT Humvee with them and were assigned a certain section to search inside and outside numerous homes, ultimately with no results. After 14 hours of continuous searching, the North Metro SWAT team was ready to rotate out and stand down. They were exhausted, but then duty called. They were ready to move off the rotation when, as luck would have it, they got the call to respond to a Franklin Street residence immediately. Blood had been seen on and around a boat that sat in the yard of a Watertown resident. The Boston team leader at the time said, "We're going," to which Chief Cafarelli said, "We're coming with you." They convoyed over to Franklin Street together. Boston took the right side of the house, and the Metro North SWAT team from Revere took the left side. Others then came in and filled the perimeter around the house. Everyone was there, all working together. There were some they hadn't trained with before, but as the chief said, "It was like pickup basketball." They just needed to work through any potential problems. As time went by, though, Chief Cafarelli and his team began to wonder if they were on another false trail, something that had happened to them over and over that same day. They started second-guessing because there had been so much misinformation during that course of the day, and so many reports, some factual and some erroneous, but they sat on the perimeter and thinking, "Maybe the blood was just a result of someone who had been working on the boat. What if there was an animal inside the boat and wounded?" However, the suspect finally poked his head up from underneath the top. They recognized his hair, which was very distinctive, and they knew they had the right guy. At that time, law enforcement, including Chief Cafarelli and his Revere contingent of the North Metro SWAT team, stormed the boat and took Sarnayev into custody. Fearing the suspect may have explosives or other deadly devices, Chief Cafarelli Fearing the suspect may have explosives or other deadly devices, Chief Cafarelli put his marine training that he obtained while overseas as a respondent to the 1983 Marine Barrack suicide bombings in Lebanon to good use by searching the suspect and helping place him into custody. Residents of Revere are well-served by our chief and the great officers that you see with us here tonight. Revere High School Principal Dr. Lorenzo Garcia has done some incredibly outstanding work. During his relatively short time here in Revere, he, along with his entire staff of teachers and administrators, have quickly become known as some of the most progressive group of educators in the state, so much so that Revere High School is receiving both national and statewide recognition. In Massachusetts, they are being highlighted in the state's Year Three Race to the Top Report. The Race to the Top is a competitive grant program intended to encourage and reward states that create conditions for innovation and reform. When the program was announced back in July of 2009, the U.S. Department of Education asserted that participating states and districts will offer models for others to follow and will spread the best reform ideas across their states and across the country. The program's purpose, according to the department, is to advance reforms in several areas. Number one, adopting standards and assessments that prepare students to succeed in college and the workplace and to compete in a global economy. Two, building data systems that measure student growth and success, and that inform teachers and principals about how they can improve instruction. Three, recruiting, developing, rewarding, and retaining effective teachers and principals, especially where they are needed most. Revere High School was recognized for their focus on the four Rs: rigor, relevance, relationships, and resilience. In addition, they are being recognized nationally through an Excellence in Urban Education Award issued by the National Center for Urban School Transformation. Sixteen schools are recognized each year nationally. These urban schools have multiple challenges, yet they have outstanding evidence of academic achievement for all students. Winning schools contribute to an ever-growing effort to understand how educators can create excellent urban schools for all students. Evaluators are charged with visiting each finalist school to observe and record educational practices firsthand. While the majority of finalist schools demonstrated great effort and accomplishment in providing quality education, the winning schools went above and beyond their peers in developing truly amazing learning environments. Some of the reasons our high school is receiving such attention and recognition, and there are many, includes the implementation of a freshman academy to help ninth graders adjust to the demands of high school; the changing of the schedule so that all students can participate in an advisory session with teachers; by bringing our beloved JROTC program to Revere; moving us from a mere high school library to a 21st-century learning commons; securing a $500,000 Nellie May grant to transform Revere High School to a digital learning community; and, with the help of his teachers, Dr. Garcia has carried out the district's vision of an iPad in the hands of every high school student while providing teachers the opportunity to utilize the iPads in a flipped learning environment. We are proud of all the great work that is going on at Revere High School and across the entire district. Many of you know that my administration puts a lot of time and effort into fostering community spirit and instilling pride in our community. This next story is another example of how hard work and how dedicated coaches and volunteers have joined us in that effort. Last month, the Revere Pop Warner A Squad, led by Coach Meredith Stavreinos, the B Squad, led by Coach Jen Mora, and the C Squad, led by Melissa Elam, went down to the ESPN Wide World of Sports Complex in Lake Buena Vista, Florida, to compete in the 2013 Pop Warner Super Bowl and National Cheer and Dance Championships. Together, they soared to heights that no other organization in eastern Massachusetts and quite possibly in the entire country had ever reached before: three teams competing and three teams winning national championships. We are so proud of the work that these young girls and boys have done, and we salute them along with President Mark Tango, their head coaches and assistants, the Pop Warner Board of Directors, and all of the parents, grandparents, siblings, aunts and uncles that helped make all of this possible. From Massachusetts to Florida and the 48 states in between, one fact has become clear: when it comes to Pop Warner cheerleading, the city of Revere is a national powerhouse, and now it has the hardware to back it up. Mark, congratulations to you and the girls of Pop Warner. the Financial Literacy Pilot Program, which was established by the legislature in July of 2012, is a three-year pilot program to help 10 Gateway City School Districts equip high school students with the knowledge and skills necessary to become self-supporting and make critical decisions regarding personal finances. Last year, State Treasurer Steve Grossman informed my office and Superintendent Paul Dakin that Revere High School was one of the first to receive such a grant in the amount of $20,000. This grant is a result in large part through the efforts of many, including Matt Costa and Mr. John Kingston of the Revere Municipal Employees Federal Credit Union. Others included Robert Adams, Joe Chicorello, Diana DiChristoforo, John DiMarco, Julian Esposito, John Fergus, Chris Kingston, John Mitchell, and Dawn Pinkerton. Their hard work in securing this grant has provided the support necessary in the development of a financial literacy program that aligns with the 2011 Massachusetts Curriculum Frameworks for Mathematics and the Economic Education Council's National Standards for Financial Literacy. The grant is being implemented this year and will ultimately touch each and every student at Revere High School. Hopefully, the work students engage in through this program will make them more informed consumers who are equipped to make well-informed decisions with their hard-earned money. It has been the greatest honor of my life to serve the citizens of Revere over the last two years as your mayor. Let's continue to work together to foster a positive environment of progress and make our great city an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you.
Calendar item number two: Mohegan Sun Massachusetts LLC will conduct a presentation on the proposed casino design.
I think we'll take a two-minute recess, and then we'll get on with the presentation. Okay, we're going to bring the January 13 meeting of the Revere City Council back to order. We're about to see a brief presentation from Mohegan Sun. Now, we've all heard a lot about this wonderful host-community agreement that we have, but mostly all the citizens have been hearing about these great numbers. Tonight, we're going to see a little bit of the actual concepts and plans of what this building and this casino will look like. There won't be time tonight for questions to be asked, so there will be many of these presentations. Tonight's just a visual, so please just be here with us, and this is just so everybody can see what a magnificent proposal they have for us, and we'll have question-and-answer sessions at another time.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks to the council for having us here tonight. We wanted to give at least a brief update, probably have maybe 10 minutes or so, that we can fill you in on several fronts. Actually, we have about a half a dozen fronts.
If I could just interrupt you for a second, just for the record, could you please give your name?
In fact, I am, and my name is Gary Luteritz. I'm a vice president for Operations and Development at Mohegan Sun, and with me here tonight is Peter Schultz. Pete is a project coordinator for Mohegan Sun. We've got about a half a dozen items that I'm going to just go over as an agenda briefly with you, but I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself a little further, and Pete as well, so that you know that we are accessible. We're here for you. We want to make sure you have our business cards. We're available if you need to contact us, either by email or through a telephone call, and we wanted to make sure we had some visibility with everybody tonight. So please feel free, when we're done, make sure that we make a connection. I have been, I'm almost embarrassed to say, in the casino industry business for about 34 years. Actually, I've entered my 35th year this year, and have spent most of my career on the operations side of the casino industry. So I wanted to make sure you understood that, in case there's questions about how we're going to operate and how we're going to function, I think I can be a great help to you in that regard. Pete is actually a member of the Mohegan Tribe, and in fact, he was formerly the vice-chair of the board at the tribe, and so together, we think we'd make a pretty good tag team to give you just a quick update tonight. There's about a half a dozen items we want to go over, as I said. First, both the site planning that is underway right now and some details on what we're working out with the referendum. Pete's going to give you a quick update on that in just a moment. I'll talk a little bit about the fact that we have a gaming application supplement that is due, and we're working on that, as well as a surrounding community update, a little discussion about our points partnership program, and our gaming presentation, which is due to the Gaming Commission on January 22. So I'm going to turn it over to Pete now, and Pete's going to talk a little bit about our site planning.
Thanks, Gary. Thank you, Gary, and hello, members of the council, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you. As Gary stated, my name is Peter J. Schultz, and I am the project coordinator for Mohegan Sun. And I did serve as the vice-chairman from 2000 to 2005, and that was actually a period of significant expansion at Mohegan Sun. It was actually when Phase 2 was undertaken. And actually, during that period, the architect of record was KPF, Colin Peterson Fox, the architects that are building this project. So given that, I wanted to speak a little bit, give you a little bit more detail. I mean, Mitch has been up, and we had that wonderful event at the chamber, but we want to start to fill in some detail for you as we go down the road here. And I think, as Gary pointed out, we do this in a very rolling way and a very informal way. After I give this presentation, because some of the things I'm going to touch on here are hard to see on some of the diagrams, but we can spend some time on the boards, and I love working the boards, so to speak, in terms of that, and explaining the concepts of the project and how it's all going to fit together. Because this project is one that will connect with Revere and complement it. It will not dominate Revere. It'll connect and will complement, in terms of the actual physical structure of it and the programmatic things that we're going to do as in our points program that Gary will touch on at the end of this particular presentation. When you look at the site itself, the 40-acre site that we're here in Revere, over half of that site, over half of that site is going to be dedicated to green barriers, to green enhancements. This project really is a green project. That's what I want to really speak to you tonight about and actually detail some things for you, in terms of the barriers, in terms of Winthrop Avenue, in terms of Washburn Avenue on the other side, and then we will look at our entrance, Thomas Sallow Drive and Furlong Drive, where that comes in on the western side of the property. That's a portico share that's going to be actually a landscaped outdoor building in terms of its greenery. The parking for the building, the parking for the project is actually underneath the building. There's actually a subgrade level that starts at Level 1, and we're going to go up on a three-level parking garage. And actually, that'll all be, but you won't look in there and see cars. That'll all be bermed on Winthrop Avenue. There'll be native plantings up there, greenery that will mask that from view of Winthrop Avenue. The idea, too, is that that parking underneath the building, in terms of our impervious area for stormwater issues, that we don't have a large paved area. So we have that in terms of parking. On the northeast corner of the building, over at Beauchamp Station, we're going to have something called, actually, it's a photovoltaic field, on the roof. We're going to have 270 on-grade parking spaces there, but they're going to be covered by, for the want of a better term, a carport, but this isn't your average, everyday carport. This is a carport that on the roof is going to have a photovoltaic field that will generate energy. It's going to be sized to 1 megawatt of energy that that can produce. Now, that's combined with our onsite gas-fired cogeneration plant that will also produce energy. When we get both of these systems online at once, they're going to be able to reduce our electricity use by 40%. That's pretty significant. So that's something we're doing in terms of the energy field. In terms of the actual project itself, if you look at some of the specifics, is that we have a 5,000-square-foot greenhouse. I love this. A 5,000-square-foot greenhouse that's going to be on the roof of the building. It's going to be growing vegetables that are going to be used at restaurants on the site with hydroponic technology. I was talking to your Parks and Rec Director before, and you look at that in terms of, it's an educational event that we could use for area schoolchildren and recreation programs in the summer. It's actually going to be combined with that with a farm-to-table restaurant on the project itself, within the project itself. So you look at that. You look at our energy stuff, our parking spaces. We're also going to have, this is very interesting, too, talking about food. With Harvest Home, we've actually created a relationship, or will create a relationship, with Harvest Home, a company down out of Waltham, Mass. And I would encourage you all to go to their website. It's pretty interesting stuff. And we actually do a version of this with a piggery, actually, at Mohegan Sun. We did this in the very beginning, too. But this is a new technology. This is very interesting stuff. This is a company down in Waltham, and what we're going to do is take the food waste that comes out of all our restaurants. Now, that's us, the casino, that's the retail corridor, it's all of our people there that are involved in food production. They're going to be trained to separate this food waste in a certain way. The company's going to come and pick it up, take it down to Waltham, and they put it into, for the want of a better term, it looks like a storage container, like a very long, narrow storage container, but it happens to be airtight. So they get the material in there with a payloader, pack it in there, close it up, and they release molecules in there. It's called anaerobic digestion. And what it does is it actually breaks the material down and it creates biogas. Now, this biogas can actually be transferred into natural gas. So here, again, in terms of energy, here's something else novel that we're doing. There's a lot of novel stuff with this particular project. This project is good stuff. This project, again, is here to complement and to connect with the community. So we look at that, and we look at actually, there's something even more mundane. There's a rainwater collection tank on the roof that's going to be used for our water system. We're going to do a gray water recycling system. It's actually going to be fed by a rainwater collection tank on the roof. So you look at us, and you look at, it's called the BMS, the Building Management System, too, that's actually going to be a smart, computer-driven system that runs the whole property. We're doing a number of things because we're going after a gold lead. A gold lead is a huge stretch for a company, okay? It's a huge stretch for a casino company to do that, but we're stretching for it, and we can do it. We think we can do it with this particular property in itself. I guess last but not least, certainly not last but not least, is the open spaces. There's going to be a lot of glass that lets in natural light. There's a lot of plazas, terraces. It's actually built on an Italian galleria. That's actually the format that KPF uses when they talk about this, that it's actually, all these open spaces, actually, there's a plaza that actually looks out onto a terrace on the north wall, on the Winthrop Avenue side, and this is going to be a on the north wall, on the Winthrop Avenue side, and this is going to be up high enough where you can look out and you'll be able to see Revere Beach, okay? Because we are looking to connect with the people, the place, and the history. Inside the building, there are going to be a number of spaces that are going to be public spaces for art, where art will be displayed. Now, one of our development partners, Todd Fernard, has a relationship with the School of Museum of Art here in this area, but also, we're looking at local art. We're looking at local art from Revere. We're looking at local art from the region, in terms of something that being displayed in the property. So we're really looking at a very different use here. This is a very different use, and even our design, you know, it's been made fun of to say, oh, it's like the Jetsons. It's a curve-or-linear design. And actually, when you look at those portico shares, what they are modeled after is parasols, parasols that were used on Revere Beach. And actually, you'll see that thematically inside the building, in terms of when we actually get down to that point. So we're serious about what we do in terms of taking the local community and bringing that into the project, that we're going to, it becomes, to me, it becomes an easel. It becomes an easel for you to tell your story. It's not about us, it's about the project, it's about you, it's about your story. So that's the project, or some of the things that we're going to be stressing. And actually, where we're going to stress these is actually in the ward parties, and we get out on the ground and start talking to people, and actually using the boards in an informal way, and really starting to talk through some of these things. And I think that's, that's good, because it'll create knowledge about the project, and people can, I think, green is big. I think green is big, and actually, here in Revere, from what I understand, what people have told me, the green is important. So that's the project. When it comes to the referendum where we're at, is that we have an office, and we're actually moving into the office tomorrow, and it's at ninety-one Hutcheson Street. It's actually off of Route sixty here, just down from the hotel. It's the Cortello Agency, we have like one-half. So we're going to be renting that over the next five or six months. We'll be moving in tomorrow. By Thursday, you know, my IT guy, I had to, if it's not cloudy and the moon is in the seventh house, he's going to show up on Thursday and connect us, you know, God willing. So hopefully, by the end of the week, we'll be up and running, in terms of that. When it comes to this week, we actually are starting with a referendum. We're going to Beauchamp VFW. That's Thursday at six PM. I think the event is from six to nine PM. Now ironically, even though he didn't mention this, but Gary is a veteran of the U.S. Navy. I'm a veteran of the U.S. Air Force, and then we will be joined by our chairman, who's Kevin Brown, who is a veteran of the U.S. Army. So I think it's kind of, it's almost like, boy, that's telling, right? That our very first event is going to be at a VFW, and here we are. Well, that shows you, we don't preach it, we live it, we do it, we've done it. So that's what we are. We're not, we're not corporate people, you know, parachuting in from Las Vegas, we're not. We come up on the train, and the train breaks down, and we get stuck. We're here in rental cars, in our own cars, et cetera, but, but I think we can connect. I think we can connect with the community. I like, I like this community. So it's got, I think, I think we're off to a really good start, really. So hopefully, we're going to, we're going to be doing that on Thursday. And then we have, I think, February third is our first jobs event, and that's being formed up as we speak. That's going to be at the Wonderland Ballroom. And that is, our fellows from down there in Mohegan Sun, our HR Director, Don Trello, will come up with about five or six different employees, and what they're going to do, and there's about three-hundred-and-fifty people already signed up for this event, and that's the third of February, I think it starts at like five-thirty over at the Wonderland Ballroom, is they're going to explain what it's like to work at Mohegan Sun. This is not, it's not a scripted thing, it's not a thing with five thousand PowerPoints. These are five or six people that talk about what it was like for them to come to work at Mohegan Sun, and what it's like to work there. So it really gives people, you know, you know how people are when they meet each other in the hallway, oh, what's it like to work there? So that's actually what this does. And it actually works, we did it, you know, in our previous life, our previous iteration out there in Western Mass, and it actually works very well in terms of connecting with people. So that's our working at. And then the very next day is our working with, which is our vendor event, as the mayor keyed into. There's a number of things here in terms of development for the city, in terms of jobs, but also vendors, you know, in terms of what we have to buy here in the city. There's going to be, the next day, there'll be a vendor event, and that's from twelve to two with a location to be determined. Nothing has happened yet in terms of that. Then we also have, I guess, next Tuesday, "la delicioso"? Is that how you say it? I got that right. Okay, so there's an event scheduled there, and that's a ward party also, I think, Ward Two? Yeah.
Ward Two.
So that, that event is scheduled, and then we're going to, they're going to be rolling out as the week goes on. So we're launched, you know, we have, we're getting all of our systems together. I think we're off to a good start. You know, the fellows tell me that, you know, they're starting to phone bank, they're starting to do those things. So I think we're off to a good start, and I just, we just got to keep it going, and like, keep communicating, and if you have any questions whatsoever along the way, give me a shout. I mean, it doesn't matter, any time of day, like Gary and I both know, we, you know, we go back and forth, ten-thirty at night, emails and stuff, so we don't tend to get up early, though, but anyway, so. But I'd be more than happy to help you. And also, if there's any questions about the boards afterwards, you know, they'll be down there, and I'd be happy to spend any time with you to explain some details to you. All right, Gary, to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. I won't take up too much more of your time. I wanted to let you know that we are working out several fronts now, and I won't mention them all tonight, but there are several more fronts I just wanted to update you on. One of them is, as I mentioned in the agenda, we are, by the middle of December, the Gaming Commission, as we were coming to a close on our application, added about thirty-seven supplements to what we needed to submit as part of the application. So we have been diligently working on that since December thirty-first. That's required to be submitted on December twenty-first, and it's addressing issues from geographical maps and the surrounding area to, to some of the problem gambling metrics that they wanted to know about, to a whole host of other items. So that's one of the things that we've got our team putting together right now. We are actively engaged in discussions with the surrounding communities. We certainly have designated several in our initial application, but there are a number of communities who have come forth, as of today, they needed to officially designate themselves with a commission as a surrounding community, and then we have, we will have some time to respond to that, and hopefully, we can work out this amicably with all the surrounding communities. I mean, the whole region is important to us. And you heard the mayor, for example, say that, you know, we'd like to see seventy-five percent of the jobs come within fifteen miles of Revere, and I think we can do that. And I think there's, there's that kind of economic benefit. There's a great deal of expenditures that we're going to make that I think benefits those communities as well. So I think we'll be, we'll be able to come up with some agreements that make sense for everybody involved, and hopefully lift the whole region in the process. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a second. And that is through our business points partnership program. You know, we've had some discussions with Boston, particularly as it relates, as it relates to the Convention and Visitors Bureau there and the MCCA. I really believe that Mohegan Sun in Revere is going to become a bridge to tourism to the whole North Shore. We are going to be connecting with, we first off are a sales tool for the Convention and Visitors Bureau to actually bring tourism into the, into the region generally, you know, because we become an add-on, you know, a half-day convention that takes place as part of a larger convention that's, that's already underway in Boston. That leads to maybe a room block at Mohegan Sun, or at the hotels and other lodging here on the North Shore. That leads to visitation at our property, where we will be displaying all sorts of attractions and business relationships through electronic kiosks and in-room videos and all sorts of advertising of that type. And we're going to enhance that in what I think is going to be a huge way. And I know you've heard us talk about it before. I wanted to just talk about it a little bit further today, and that's this points relationship, this points program relationship that we have. Like all casinos that have been operating for decades, we have a rewards program. And that rewards program allows people to earn, in most cases, we'll call them points, and those points have value. And forever, those, that value has been redeemable at locations within the casino itself. There have been some companies that have trickled out some, some of those points values into a local hotel on a very one-off basis, but this has never been done to this magnitude, to my knowledge, anywhere in the United States, or elsewhere, for that matter. And that is where we're going to take these rewards, and we are going to allow our patrons to take that card and use that with every one of our business partners out in the community. I don't think that our businesses in the area that we've been talking to, although we've had about a hundred of such businesses sign an interest form for us, have really grasped what this means yet. We're talking about tens of millions of dollars, not just the ten million that we've decided that, you know, that we're going to work towards spending in Revere for expenditures, not the fifty million that we're talking about spending in the region for expenditures. But this is money that patrons have in their accounts, and it's going to be tens of millions of dollars. It may be exceeding a hundred million dollars that they're going to be able to use in these local businesses. And I think what will probably happen from this, as, as businesses, as retail businesses begin to catch on to the idea, we're actually going to be competing for those dollars. And if you're a patron, if you're a visitor of Revere and of Mohegan Sun, and you're able to see the attractions in the, in the area from the visuals that we'll have on property, that's going to bring you out to the local restaurants in the community. That may take you to a nearby lodging area in your next visit to the area. So we think this is, this is monumental, and I, and I would like our business community to really understand it, because I think, I think once they start to get a, get a hold of it, this can be a big, big boost for all the businesses, the retail businesses in the area. The last thing I want to just mention is that we, we have been working on a, a presentation to the Gaming Commission that is, in essence, a formal presentation to the Commission on January twenty-second that follows our RFA Two gaming application. We've spent a lot of time on this. We want to make a good presentation to the, to the Gaming Commission. We think it gives us an opportunity to highlight the fact that we are an outward-looking facility and an outward-looking company, and we want to be part of the community, and we want to be able to express that formally in front of the Gaming Commission. This is our opportunity to do that. So that takes place a week from Wednesday. We think we're ready for it. We thank you for, for the support that you've shown throughout this whole process, and I just want to end by thanking you for having us here tonight, and I hope you'll have us back. We can keep you updated to, to whenever you would like us to.
You'll be back more than you want.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Take a one-minute recess. Here we go. Okay, that was the final recess of the January thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen Revere City Council meeting. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number three, adoption of the City Council Rules of Order for two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and fifteen.
All in favor? All opposed?
Mr. President.
Counselor Penta.
I just, I don't know, I threw you to the clerk if this is legal or not, but last week, when we voted for president, I just got caught up in a moment, and I did not change my vote. I don't know if I can legally at this time or not, but...
Counselor, unfortunately, you won't be able to change your vote at this time.
Okay, I apologize for that.
That's fine. I know you're there in spirit. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number four, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Neil Shea Jr., nine oh-nine Revere Beach Parkway, Revere, Mass. as a constable.
That will go to the Appointments Committee. That's not quite assigned yet. The committees will be finalized this week, and, but that will go to the Appointments Committee.
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Cynthia Tallis, nine thirty-six Winthrop Ave, Revere, Mass. as a constable.
Again, Appointments Committee.
Calendar item number six, communication from the Election Commissioner relative to the approval of exemption in order to employ city employees on election night.
Motion placed on file.
No, we have to vote on this, I believe, don't we?
Withdrawn. Roll call.
Roll call on the exemption to employ city employees for election night. Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Genino.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hesse.
Yes.
Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes. The exemption has been approved. Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor require Wonderland Dog Track to clear the snow from the sidewalk bordering the property from Shaman Street to the pedestrian light at the parking garage during snow events.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, there are many residents in the area who live down on the end of Lower Revere Street there, Sagamo, Shama, Dun Road, that area down there, that have to get up in the morning and go to work. And that doesn't stop if it's snowing, they still have to go. So this motion, I'd like to amend this motion, add also onto it that they not only clean the snow along the sidewalk at, from that Shama Street to the pedestrian light, that Wonderland Marble, which is not in business down there anymore, I understand, but they still own the property, be required, along with the city of Revere, to clear that sidewalk after everybody just plows, or snowplows, just plow the snow in there, and it, and people have to walk out on the North Shore Road to get to the tea station. I certainly, I don't think any of us would want to see anyone down there injured by a moving vehicle, because we were negligent in requiring the snow to be cleared, and we allowed that to continue. So I hope this motion will be addressed by the mayor as quickly as possible in the event that there is another snowstorm forthcoming. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Anybody else on this? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number eight, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor require the DPW to clean the snow on the sidewalk at the pedestrian signals at North Shore Road and Revere Street.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is another area where kids living in that area down there, Bay Road, those streets down there, have to cross North Shore Road to get to the Par Revere School, and I would hope, I would hope that whether it be our DPW or the mayor requires the State Department of Public Works to clean those areas around the pedestrian lights down there so that kids can walk up there without being endangered by moving vehicles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anybody else on this motion? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor request Mass DPW to seek reimbursement from the bonding company regarding the construction site at the corner of Linway and Rice Avenue. Make arrangements to have the area reseeded as well. This needs to be done because of the damage caused by the construction company.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I don't expect them to go down there tomorrow morning and reseed the area. That would be ridiculous, but the history of that is that there was a company hired by Mass Department of Public Works to redo the General Edwards Bridge, and unfortunately, after they got halfway through the project, they went bankrupt, and a bonding company has stepped in. I did, I was successful in getting them to remove the dumpster and the other materials stored down there, construction materials, but I just don't want to see this fall by the wayside. I'd like to see that, that the bonding company or whoever is responsible through Mass Highway in the springtime, they get down there, they regrade that and reseed it. It's not a big job, but it's an important job aesthetically for the residents that live down there in that section of the Point of Pines. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number ten, motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky, that the mayor include in the next FY two thousand and fifteen DPW budget, three laborer positions or more. These positions must be located in the DPW to work on much-needed services within the city of Revere.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, everybody knows that I, we're all trying to get more for our DPW, and we all know that they're probably most aligned, misaligned departments in the city, and always the, the bridemaid. and always the, the bridemaid. And I think it's about time that we showed as a group to the mayor that we are willing to accept more positions in the budget in this department, specifically for this department. I'm, I'm only asking for three, and I think I'm being reasonable with three, but if he feels he can find more money to hire more. But we're looking for people, for bodies to be down the yard and to go out in the street and show our residents that work is being done, and to the, everybody's best ability. I know the guys work many hours now trying to get things done, but they just run out of time. So I would hope that this body approves this, votes in favor of it, so we can tell the mayor, put it in the budget, and we'll pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't even agree with the counselor anymore. I mean, I totally agree with him. The only thing, look at the motion, unfortunately, we can't add to the budget. I talked to the mayor about this on a weekly basis, and he'd like to put 20 down there. That department has been shut. We had a police department at 118 people at once, it's down to 98. This department had 130 people. It's down to 20-something. I'm all for it. I mean, I think they need more than the three. That's my opinion. If the mayor came and put more in, but I, I mean, as far as the motion is, it's moot because we cannot dictate to the mayor how to spend money. We can only cut and not add. But there's no question, I agree with the counsel wholeheartedly, that, I mean, any given day, somebody calls out sick, or something happens, someone's moved from one department to the other, sidewalk department to water department, water department to, to whatever. I mean, they just don't have enough men. And unfortunately, I think it probably is well-needed. I'm gonna vote for the motion, even though, you know, I don't think it, you know, and however the mayor puts even more than this. But I know I talked to him, and he wishes he had 20 people. I mean, and I know as a ward councilor, as Counselor Novoselfsky, we take the brunt of it when things don't get done. So I know where he's coming from this. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Penta. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's an excellent motion, and I realize, as Counselor Penta does, that, you know, money is very scarce. It's something that is gonna require a significant amount of funding, probably in excess of $150,000. However, I also, at this time, would like to take this opportunity to urge the residents of this city on February 25th to go out and make that vote, because that's the only way that we're gonna be able to increase the staffing at the DPW, put more police out on the street, and provide more public safety through fire and other vehicles in, in the city. So again, it's so important that we do that. Again, I want to compliment Counselor Novoselfsky. I think it's an excellent motion. But I think if, if this casino was built in Revere, that we'll have more than 20 people down, more than three people down there, more likely the mayor would be able to put on 20 young, able-bodied, capable men, capable of doing the work that's required on infrastructure and sanitation and other issues in the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a little bit lukewarm about this motion, not because I don't see the need for three additional workers. Everybody knows that Donnie's struggling down there. All you have to do is take a ride around the city, look at all the potholes that need to be filled, and you have to wonder how the heck he's gonna find people to do it. It's gonna be a huge issue. It's been a huge issue. It is a huge issue. But having said that, everything's relative here. If we have the money to do it, I'm certainly in favor of it. I'm just not in favor of suggesting that regardless of what the cost is, or regardless of where we are financially, that we must do it. I vote, I will vote for this with the understanding that I'm not bound by, in any way, shape, or form, to vote for this proposal without having the opportunity to look at the entire, entire budgetary situation come, come this spring. So I am in favor of it, but again, with that, with that proviso. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riordan. Counselor Guanasso. Counsel Vice President, Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I raised my hand to voice my opinion prior to some of the commentary that was just offered. But as we all know, we, the mayor prepares this budget for us in mid-May, and by then we will know the determination from the Gaming Commission. It will give us full direction as to know how our lives will be charted from there on. So I think this is a great idea, and I think that it's mindful of the fact that even if we don't, are not successful, some attention has to be given to the DPW for more bodies down there, whether they be men or women, because we certainly receive on a daily basis from our constituents needs of city services in this direction. So whatever we can do to put more bodies down at the city yard is a very important factor for our community. But I hope that in May, when we're talking about all that money that we're gonna be tossing about, that we'll have the luxury of maybe more, maybe 13 or 20 additional people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's a great motion. We all know, especially as Ira just pointed out, we're all on this side here, we're all ward councilors. The DPW is very important to us. I got a lot of calls on the potholes. This has been a tough year for potholes. But I would like to, they need many more than three, but if we might amend that, the mayor see the feasibility in order to hire three, not stating that, you know, that he can, see, we can't tell him what to do.
It's a request.
It's a request. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a vote on this motion. Normally, I'd send this to Ways and Means, but I, I think we'll just take a vote on the motion and see what happens. On the motion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I think Counselor Haas put an amendment in.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. With Counselor Haas' amendment.
The mayor looked under the feasibility.
That, that the mayor see that it's fiscally feasible, I think, was his amendment.
Yes.
Yes. On the motion as amended. All in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor Haas, that the following ordinance amendment be ordered to a public hearing. This is an amendment to the Senior Citizen Property Tax Work Off Abatement Ordinance.
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe, you know, this is part of the senior citizens program. They work a number of hours. They're paid $8 an hour. It was originally implemented by former mayor, Tom Ambrosino. And I think it's about time that we look at the cost 14 years later, and I like to adjust the cost, basically, as the motion indicates. And I'm just requesting a public hearing, that's all.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion? Anybody else? Counselor Penta.
I think it's a good motion. You know, 14 years is a long time without anything going up. The only thing I, you know, sometimes you throw these things out there, and there's no money there. I hate to see this pass, and we have 100 senior citizens out there, and all of a sudden we got 60 of them because of the money that's allocated. So I think there has to be a study on this, and what the exact cost is, and anything else. But I mean, I'm all for a cost of living for, especially for senior citizens. So I think, I think it's, our vote work is gonna go to public hearing, and probably go to committee after that, so I have no problem with the motion.
Anybody else? I'll just take a second to say that I certainly support the counselor on this. We've, we've had the same discussion, I think, with the same constituents, Counselor Haas and I, and so it is definitely, it's pretty easy to justify an increase after 14 years. I think we're, we're well below what would be considered minimum wage. So we'll vote this to a public hearing. All in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky, that the mayor make arrangements to provide the members of the city council with city-issued identification.
Counselor Novoselfsky.
Speaks for itself, Mr. President.
Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo, that the mayor restore the fiscal year 2014 line item for office supplies in account 011114-540000 to the fiscal year 2009 level.
Motion speaks for itself, but I think Counselor Novoselfsky wants to speak on it.
Just a question, Mr. President, to you. What department is this for?
This is, this is the city council budget office supplies account. For example, we just had, I think, 75 certificates given out to the cheerleaders. That's a cost of $350. That's that one, one line item. So that's what, that's what the account is.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Counselor Arigo.
I would make a, an amendment that we, we see, similar to the previous motion, to see if it's financially feasible to, to, to pass this motion and to, to do this.
Absolutely. I think, in fact, this, this motion went in premature. I had submitted this, but intended to hold it until I made the committee assignments. So it's gonna end up in Ways and Means when that's assigned next week. So I'm gonna put this in Ways and Means limbo until the committee says sign. All in favor? All opposed? Point of privilege? Is that, is no other motions? State your point.
I just want to thank everyone who voted for me, and I want to say that each and every one of us offer a unique attribute as a counselor, and I look forward to working with all of you, and I think we're gonna get a lot of business done this week, this year. So, thank you.